Good morning and welcome to the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee number six for 2022. I can see we have all councillors in attendance except for the deputy mayor who sends his apologies to us this morning. So on that, I'd like to request that we move a leave of absence for the deputy mayor this morning. Do I have a second, do? Thank you councillor Kunsman. And we'll take that straight to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Over to councillor Kunsman for this morning's welcome to acknowledgement of country.
Thank you, Chair. Today, this committee recognises the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet. We support their right to democratic representation and social inclusion. Ipswich City Council acknowledges the ongoing challenges faced by Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. And this committee supports their inclusion and participation in community cultural arts and sports activities.
Thank you councillor. Do any councillors have any declarations of interest? No. Moving on to item number one, which is just the confirmation of the minutes of the previous committee. And the recommendation here is that the minutes of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee held on the 16th of June 2022 be confirmed. I'm happy to move those. And councillor Kunsman seconding? Anyone have any amendments that they'd like to make? No, we'll take that one straight to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Now onto the officer reports this morning, and a pretty exciting one for us. And one that will hopefully be rolled out for the new financial year. And that's the community funding and support guidelines. Mayor, did you have questions for council officer?
Thank you, yes councillor.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms Dower.
Good morning, Melissa Dower, and I'm the Community Development Manager.
Good morning.
Through the chair, Ms Dower, thank you very much for revitalising our, our community grants. And thank you for running the workshops with us and working with us and for your professional input into that as well. Very exciting. I'm going to ask one question about, not the community projects, but the, the community events funding programme. And there's a line in there, I'll just look for the exclusions. And it says, applications where the financial budget is cash flow positive, i.e. income expenses, it's excluded. I guess I'm asking that I know that we have a lot of hardworking community groups that are raising, doing fundraising events. They have to, they have to be cash flow positive, otherwise they wouldn't receive funding. I guess I'm asking for your professional input on, on why that is there when, you know, we have community groups who are working very hard from Rotary to Lions to Zonta who are running these events. Do you mind taking me through that?
Yeah, sure. So on reflection, we may need a bit more clarity in the wording of that. We did change it a little bit, but we might, we should have really clarified what we were referring to in that. We do look at preference to fund projects that have a significant social impact on the ground that we actually have sight on. So we actually know where those funds have been going within the community. The reason that we've got that there is we have noted that previously we've had community groups that have seeked funds from council. And they've actually identified that their co-contribution is the money that they're actually going to receive for fundraising. So an example is if they were to host a dinner, they may say that their co-contribution of $2,000 is actually from tickets sold. So we can't verify that those tickets sold have part of that. So that's where there does need to be some clarity. But we also, I've just got some notes here just in regards to that. We want to really be on the ground in the delivery of our community projects as possible. So we want to look at how the merit base, so when we're identifying how that's actually supporting our community. Our assessment panel, it's quite subjective with fundraising. So we do definitely agree that there's merit in supporting fundraisers. But we do also acknowledge that sometimes we don't know where those funds actually go. Do they sit in a kitty or do they actually go on the ground?
Right. Okay, so I guess what's the, okay, thank you. Probably the only other thing I was, this is from my email yesterday. I note that with, when state and federal governments provide grants, there are terms and conditions, just like we have terms and conditions. And with the state and the federal governments, there's always a condition that any announcement is usually done with that level of government as well. So if there was, if the state government do a gambling benefits grant, it's with the, you know, a state representative and same with the federal ones. So I'm, I'm quite keen to do something similar in, in council. So that way it's sort of acknowledged as well, not just at the end. So I guess I'm after feedback on how that would work for us.
Mayor, I can, I can agree that we need to enforce our council acknowledgements with our community funding. So I agree that there is some work that community groups need to do to acknowledge the, you know, the council's contribution. So we have been working on that over the last few months and it started to pick up a bit more of a momentum. I do also acknowledge that with some of those community gambling benefit funds, the up to 30,000 that you've provided as an example. They happen to, two to three times per year as well, and it goes through the minister. We will have, with our proposed guidelines, we will have three rounds per year for our major projects, up to 15. But then we also are proposing the monthly ones, sorry, between $250 up to 15,000. In the last 12 months, we've had 280 community groups receive funding. So, you know, I would love to be able to work with every community group within our administration. And I look forward to working out how we can do that. But with 280, it might be a little challenging with our current resources.
Okay. I just note that, I won't mention that they receive $15,000 from council and they're doing an opening without considering council. Yeah, so I guess I'm just making sure that, you know, it's a significant amount of, of money. And they've went ahead and planned things without coming to council to let us know and it's a time.
Is there a question there? Sorry?
Yeah, sorry. No, I'll leave it as please. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the recommendation here is that the revised community projects funding and community event funding guidelines be endorsed by council. I'm happy to move that. Do I have a second, do? Thank you councillor Johnic. So, yeah, I'd like to open up the conversation and I guess I just want to pick up on a couple of the points that you've made this morning, Mayor. Firstly, around funding fundraisers and, you know, and I guess that's an important question for this committee and, and council to consider. I've briefly given my thoughts to councillor Kunsman, but for the benefit of the group today. You know, I guess the question is, is that how we want to be spending ratepayers' monies, you know, you know, funding fundraisers? When, I guess, the ultimate goal of the revitalisation of these particular guidelines was bringing it in line with our community development strategy, which we love dearly and we know is working in the community. And that's about building capability, about building capacity. So we, I understand that this will be over, this will be oversubscribed. I know that there's going to be lots of community groups, you know, looking to be funded, you know, with, with their community events. So because it's going to be so competitive, is council going to take a position to invest in, you know, those groups in our community who are doing wonderful community events, you know, you know, bringing in, you know, members of the community? Or are we going to be, you know, expending monies, you know, underwriting fundraisers? So it's a difficult one and it's really challenging to get the wording right. You know, cash flow positive, you know, was a fairly succinct yet difficult way of acknowledging that in the guidelines. But I guess we can have that open discussion about whether we just exclude fundraisers in their entirety and focus on, you know, exciting community events and push our community groups to be doing, you know, different things and engaging with other members in the community. I'm keen to hear anyone's thoughts out there. What do you think, Mayor?
I guess it's, it's one thing to talk about in theory and I just, I guess this was raised with me with a, a service organisation that's wanting to do an expo. You know, so they'll be bringing people into Ipswich, raising money and all the money goes to, to the community.
Yep.
And they were wanting to ask council some in kind and a little, a little bit of money, I guess. And I guess, I guess it was, because it was that scenario, I thought, well, that's probably a fair ask. Because it's going to, they were allowed to that and provide a lot of benefit. Yeah. But I guess it's, it's, it's.
Yeah, and I guess in that way it's not really a fundraiser and there's probably, you know, there's elements within the guidelines that they would be able to justify securing that funding for the project. And it's just about, I guess, the way that our community groups prosecute that. I like the way that the new guidelines challenge, you know, our, challenge the applicants to think a little bit differently about, you know, the, the key language that they pick up, the themes that they want to run through, through their events. So, you know, although I think that it could be challenging, there's enough breadth in, in the community guidelines to justify things like that. I mean, we don't want to be in a situation where we're, you know, funding alcohol packages for groups and things like that. And I know there's the balance, you know, that we need to find as a committee. But, you know, would it be helpful to explicitly call out, you know, fundraisers and say, well, that's not where we're going to be spending ratepayers' money?
I guess I'll look at if, just say, any organisation who's running an event, just to run an event, they'll get money. But someone who's running an event, I'm not talking about a dinner, I mean, actually holds some type of event, that's actually raising money for, for our community, I thought would be of a higher priority because they're actually giving back more to the community. Yeah.
Councillor Kunsman?
Thank you. I think there's a real difficulty in sorting out what's a fundraiser and what's not a fundraiser. And that fundraising may in fact be incidental.
Yes.
And that we need to consider where the funds raised are applied. Another, another level of difficulty, of course, as well. The other thing I wanted to raise was, and I don't know whether, and I'm sorry I haven't canvassed this with other committee members, but I believe it should say in there that councillors are not making these decisions about the, about the allocation of funds.
I guess.
It's only a few words, but I think it's probably very important that we say that, that we are not the ones.
We're not, we're not the decision makers on this. We're not assessing any of the applications. So you.
Well, that too, yes. So you could make that statement that we're not accessing, accessing the applications and we're not making the decisions. I, I just put that forward for consideration.
Do we need some advice on that particularly, whether that's, you know, implied and the process that we go through?
I mean, obviously we, we do with the council of discretionary funds.
Yeah.
Yeah. But everything else, yeah, councils have zero input. With no decision-making ability, yeah.
You could argue that it's implied when you look at the assessment process.
Yep.
That's detailed here, but I'd rather an explicit comment. Thank you.
So I'm getting nods from.
Yep, the inclusion of that.
Ms Dower, that we can make that explicit. I think that that's reasonable and appropriate.
Through your chair, just to clarify that that's the two facts, that we don't access the assessments, the, the applications and we're not the decision makers. Thank you.
So I might propose an amendment, but I won't be prescriptive. I'll just say. Well, we'd, I could probably, as the chair, take this offline and ensure its inclusion prior to full council consideration in two weeks' time, and I'm happy to do that. So. CEO.
That would be fine, or alternatively, I think the intention's clear and you could leave it to me to work with the officers to make an amendment to the guidelines to bring back to council.
Awesome. Perfect.
I agree.
May I, Chair, I'm going to go back to the point. Let's just say our, our shows, our local shows do receive event funding from councils.
Event sponsorship funding, so that's different outside of these.
That's outside this, yes, as opposed to the community event. So I guess if it's a smaller event, as opposed to our shows, which obviously are larger.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm trying to find where's the consistency?
Yeah. Yeah, and it's, I mean, do, do you not think, what are your, what are your explicit thoughts?
Well, I do know that line there, that, you know, community groups who, who wanting to run an event that also raises funds, that they've been rejected based on that line, that because it's cash flow positive. So that's, you know, and I've, when I've looked at all the things that we support, I would think that that activity was in line with what, what community would, would expect from their council to support local events. And the fact that it's making money.
Is that an instance where, as councillor Kunsman stated, that the fundraising is incidental? They're putting on an event, but there's also fundraising happening at the event?
Yeah, so that's, they're having an event, but the goal is also to raise funds. It's not just to have a good time. Or just to provide that event for the community.
So that, so, so the event would, the events, say for instance, the, the total event cost would be $5,000 and someone wanted to put on, what was your example that you used?
A local community group wants to put on an expo.
Yeah, so $5,000 on the expo and they're expending that money. Therefore, the, the, the event is not cash flow positive because they're, it's costing them $5,000. But as a product, as a by-product of what's happening within the expo, there will be fundraising exercises happening. Is that the logic we're following there?
That's not this particular example, where they're putting it on to raised money. But obviously whoever's part of, whoever the stall holders are, obviously the stall holders aren't being subsidised. The stall holders are doing their own thing to be profitable as well.
The stall holders, yeah.
Just, just talking about incidental gain. Any event is clearly going to try for more in than out. Does that make sense? More money coming in and goes in. I'm just making that point.
Okay, so maybe we'll, we'll make a commitment to again, just work, work on that. We'll seek some advice before it comes to full council. I do think it's an idea of definitely worth fleshing out and, and understanding because the better, you know, direction that we can give to, you know, our community funding offices, the better.
Well, they're, they're wanting a set of rules. We, you know, we can't put a rule there and then complain about it. So we need to give them fair, fair rules that they can apply fairly.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and I, you know, yeah, my mind goes back to the community development strategy and, and bringing it in line and maybe, you know, pulling, you know, new, new applicants into the process. Another point for discussion this morning was around the acknowledgement guidelines. And a little bit of research, and I've got what Sunshine Council do. So I'll circulate that now and, and we can read it together as a committee and maybe discuss, you know, what that looks like for us as well. And community funding might be able to do that, do some of this work in the background, build a guideline for, for our community.
Maybe, maybe it's a dollar amount or something, I don't know.
Through your chair. I think I've got what I was going to say. Oh, sorry, I'm just, may I just follow through on your thought about, about that particular instance? I'm just wondering if it's our expectation that we would, that we would be, expect to be invited to the event. Not only the acknowledgement, but to be invited to the event. Is that what you were kind of getting at?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
So just a small little check sheet for, I guess, our community groups, you know, noting Ms Dower's intimation about the resourcing element to, you know, 200 applicants or, you know, potentially even more. Should we be making it more prescriptive and loading it in the front end? Noting that, you know, we, that council will only see it in the remittance. But handing this out, you know, in something like this, a guidelines in the first instance that says, you know, these are the kinds of things that we wish for you to do over the course of your event, might be enough?
I guess I've just seen this now, but I guess I'm looking at, a council currently have a, obviously asked for as part of the quittal for receipts, photographs of events and proof of council acknowledgement. I guess I'm looking at something a bit more upfront. So when it's announced and so that we can promote it as well and those kind of things, I think is important to promote the, to promote the, the good work that council is doing.
So just picking up the idea of an acknowledgement guideline, what, what could potentially be included in something like this to bring it in line with what you might expect?
I guess, you know, the email that I sent yesterday, what the, the state and the federal, I mean, that's this, um, um, one from the Sunshine Coast is very similar to what the state government do. There's that one pager they, they have on the acknowledgement. So I think it's in line with, I'm happy through to work with you, Chair, and, and Ms Dower over the next fortnight to, before it comes back to ordinary on, on some suggestions.
Yep. What, what are you, what are you thinking that we might change to bring it in line with what you're thinking? So what?
Actually having acknowledgement. So as opposed, because we don't have that at the moment. And yet all the other two levels of government, and we can see it, and other councils obviously do it as well, but we don't do that.
Sorry, can you explain to me what that looks like? I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
I haven't read this, but.
No, 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 but, but what, yeah, from, from what you, what you sent out yesterday, what, what does that look like? Someone, someone, someone says, yes, your application is approved, you've got the money and, and then the process of acknowledgement goes like?
Oh, depends what it is, if it's an event or if it's, you know, whether it's new footpath, new kitchen, new something, but that, you know, we can be part of that announcement to, to let the community know as well.
So that, that there would be in, in the, in the front end of that, that would be something that council.
Something at the front end. We don't have that.
And I guess, yeah, how achievable is that? You know, if we've got small monies, I mean, $200, $250, you know, might, might be something small. So what's the threshold there, you know?
Well, I've, I've also asked the question yesterday, I was only, first time told today, there was 280 different organisations. So I think you'd have to look at, where's that sweet spot?
Yeah, so maybe, you know, applications, applications more than two, two and a half thousand dollars we would, and then everything else. And, okay, happy to work with you and Ms Dower, that gives us a little bit to work with over the next couple of weeks. Yeah, awesome.
Thank you, Chair, for that.
No, that's great. Good discussion, everyone. Did you have anything to add councillor Johnic? So you had your hand up earlier, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just reading through the word acknowledgement with the handout that you just passed around from the Sunshine Coast. And it's really clear and concise.
Yep.
And a one pager, which I always love. So it's hard to hide the fact that that's what they're asking for.
Yeah.
Always, you know, wanting to keep things as simple and practical as possible. So I really like this guideline.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep, awesome. Cool. So.
Sorry, through your chair, can I just, in order that the officers can work on this in the next week before reports are required to be finalised, to go forward to council? So can I just be clear, the terms and conditions in the guidelines are explicit that successful applicants are required to acknowledge council support actively and publicly in any promotional material or publicity features. What we're looking to do is work on some, a, a one page or some, some guidance just that we can support the team in the work that they're already doing with organisations to make that just really clear upfront.
Yeah, a one pager and, and work on what that threshold is for, for the dollar amount where we, where, where there would be more than what's presently on this draft one pager, which no one sees. But, yeah. Okay, with no further, councillor Kunsman, I beg yours?
Having said all that, I congratulate the team on providing more. Having said all that, um, I congratulate the team on providing more clarity around this whole programme.
Yes, um, and it would be remiss of us not to acknowledge the good work that our community funding team do every day. Um, I constantly say it at this committee, they're, you know, really up there in terms of their front facing customer service. We give out, you know, that direct line to the department. They're always there. They're dealing with our community groups. They're fielding questions. They're doing a fabulous job. Um, and, um, you know, handing out more than $2 million over the last two years um, is an absolutely incredible achievement for us. So, um, they're, they're really doing the tough work that, um, that really builds the profile of this organisation as nurturing and supporting our community. So thanks to Ms Dower and your team as well. And with no further discussion, I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Um, and with no notices of motion or matters arising, we will bring the meeting to a close this morning at 11:26 with the next committee to commence in 10 minutes' time.